Well, the taser.
You go, Mayor.
All right.
You got the scofflaw?
Oh, I gotta go.
We had an over and under pool on your arrival time.
If I may, Mayor, for a moment, for just a week or two shy of the two years, I've sat next to the loudest set of socks in the world.
Yeah.
Which made it difficult for me sometimes to hear what was going on. I've had to put up with Representative St. Clair coming in with ties that I think he got at the Salvation Army at a buy one, get fifty free sale. And in that spirit, and recognizing the solemnness of today's occasion, I would...
That'll do it.
And it lights up.
Boy, it lights up.
I gotta sit next to this?
Yes, you do.
Well done.
I think we would agree that that sweater is draconian.
This thing cost me a fortune, I just want you to know.
Oh, that word.
Ma'am, ready to go?
The room is leaning this way.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the hour of seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council, scheduled for December twenty-three, two thousand nineteen, to begin at this time. As always, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor Mark Haynes in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, or more.
For the record, we will note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert. At this time, I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowns.
Here.
Counselor Littman.
Here.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Counselor Hamel is not with us this evening.
Counselor Hosmer.
Counselor Hosmer is not with us this evening.
Mayor Engler.
Mayor Engler is here, and that may be the first time.
Is that correct?
Second time.
Second time?
Second time.
We've had a unanimous vote?
We've had a unanimous vote.
Okay. Second time we've ever had a unanimous vote on present or here. We're all here tonight officially. Well, we're not all here. Two are missing, but four counselors are present, so let the record show that we have a quorum available for this meeting. But also note, for the record, that the council is joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by our City Finance Director Glenn Smith. First order of regular business is acceptance of minutes. Counselors, before you tonight, you have the minutes to our meeting, our last meeting on December ninth. Those minutes were distributed on the sixteenth of December. No corrections have been submitted to date, unless there are any to be suggested at this time, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our meeting of December sixth, I'm sorry, December ninth, two thousand nineteen, are approved as submitted by the clerk. Consent and action items. We have one consent and action item tonight that relates indirectly to our just past city ordinance in November that the voters approved. We have here a donation of $2,100 from the Walmart Community Grant Fund for purchase of specialized medical equipment to be placed on ambulances in the city of Laconia. Motion be in order to accept the $2,100 Walmart Community Grant for purchase of specialized medical equipment to be placed on the ambulances of the city of Laconia. That motion, Counselor Littman, seconded by Counselor Bowns. Any discussion? All those who are in favor of accepting that grant, please raise a hand. Four votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. As you recall, we had nominations at our last meeting, and Sarah Jenna had, who was an alternate at this point in time on the planning board, had requested appointment to a three-year position as a full member of the board. A motion be in order, at this point, to appoint Mrs. Jenna as a regular member of the planning board to fill a vacancy, a vacant term expiring at the end of June two thousand twenty-two. Counselor Cheney makes that motion. Counselor Haynes, second. And all those in favor of appointing Mrs. Jenna to the planning board, please raise a hand. Four votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have an appointment to the WOW Trail Maintenance Advisory Committee to fill the remainder of a three-year term expiring at the end of November of two thousand and twenty-one, and as the staff memo in your packet on page twenty points out, that position was held by Kevin Dunley, our previous Parks and Rec Director, and the recommendation from staff here is to appoint our current Parks and Rec Director, Amy Levesque, to take that position. So a motion be in order to appoint Amy Levesque to the WOW Trail Maintenance Advisory Committee to fill the remainder of the three-year term expiring at the end of November two thousand twenty-one. Counselor Haynes makes that motion. Counselor Littman, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of that appointment, please raise a hand. Four votes in affirmative, that motion carries. I inadvertently skipped over citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. I'll go back to that now. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Miss Ober.
Good evening.
Please identify yourself and where you live for the record.
My name is Gail Ober. I live in Ward Five. I'm also a member of your zoning board. First, I came here tonight to thank Mayor Engler for his six years of service to the city. Ed, I really wish you nothing but the best in your future. Hopefully, you get to some warm climates soon. But secondly, it is the Festivus season, and I'm also here for the airing of grievances. I'm just really disappointed at the way the council handled the disclosure of the three pieces of property, I guess two on Pickrell Pond Road, one over on the other side. I did check, I did not get to chase the deed. I don't think I need to, but I did check on vision that they had those deeds recorded at sale as December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. RSA ninety-one, three, subsection three states that minutes of a non-public session must be released no later than seventy-two hours after the end of the non-public session. And again, I don't question initially keeping it undisclosed, though I do hope there was a two-thirds majority who voted in favor of that, because that is also prescribed by law. But the purpose of the right to know law is to ensure the greatest possible public action to the, public access to the actions, discussions, and records of all public bodies. And this would be the New Hampshire Supreme Court, speaking in Green versus School Administration Unit, fifty-five profile, professional firefighters in New Hampshire, one fifty-nine New Hampshire at seven oh five, and also the New Hampshire Constitution, Sec. Part One, Article Eight. Once you signed the purchase and sales agreement, that should have been disclosed. I know you've all gone on record saying it was an oversight, it was a mistake, it was whatever. Councilman Hayes and Councilman Cheney, I'll give you a pass, you're new on this board. But on the rest of you, you're president, you're the publisher and president of a newspaper. You're an attorney, Mr. Hosmer's attorney. Mr. Myers is the city manager. You should have known better. And just as a citizen, it makes me question what else I don't know that I should know. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, and enjoy your holiday.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to address the council? Mr. Wood.
Patrick Wood, seven seventeen Shore Drive. I've submitted to you a letter of resignation from the Downtown Tiff Advisory Board. I am about to retire from the practice of law, and will be closing up my office in just a few weeks, if not a few days, and therefore I will not have a presence either as an owner of a property or a business in downtown, and will not qualify to serve on the advisory board anymore. It has been my pleasure to serve in that capacity for a number of years, and worked with some wonderful people, including Mr. St. Clair, who's back here as well. We've done a lot over the past few years, and it's been exciting to see it come to fruition in so many ways. But I think, as Counselor Haynes and I talked about the other day, it's even more exciting to see the young people coming into the city and becoming a part of the city. We have so many young people who have invested in new businesses in downtown, and we have a lot of young people who are involved in the Celebrate Laconia, and the Christmas Parade, if you were able to participate in it, was probably the best Christmas parade we have ever had in the city, culminating in the lighting of the tree down here in Stewart Park. So I think there's a bright future for the city, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part of that city for the past few years. I'm not leaving the city, so we'll be around, but I'll be doing something else. So, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I submit my resignation accordingly.
Thank you. All right, thank you, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of all the counselors when I say that we're most appreciative of your service to the city, not just on this committee, but on who knows how many committees and boards and commissions over the years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and best of luck to you, too.
Thank you. Representative St. Clair.
Nice tie.
Tie is not very Christmasy, I don't think.
I think now that the cameras are on, I'm not sure everybody saw that award-winning sweatshirt in its, or, excuse me, sweater, in its full delights.
I'm devastated to think that somebody may have missed it, but...
Well, it's very nice, and I, and I, I don't know where you got it, but it's a, whoever picked it out did a good job. Maybe it was you, I don't know.
I think it was Walmart, and my wife picked it out.
Good job. Jennifer couldn't make it tonight, but on behalf of Jennifer and myself, we want to thank the council for the past year, two years, actually, but for all the work you've all done, city manager, obviously, and department heads. We're looking forward to the next year. A lot of good projects have been done. I've heard from a lot of motors who are very happy with the lights on Main Street and Court Street. You'll notice that the pollution level there has definitely gone down, because people aren't sitting there looking at lights, waiting to be told they can go. So I appreciate that, and we look forward to the coming year and a lot more things, exciting things to be done. And obviously, our mayor will be seen year-round.
Thank you.
So, thank you all very much, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda at this point? Okay, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I have two items I'd like to talk about quickly tonight. One is that Mayor-elect Hosmer and myself, as long, as well as the city manager, have met to discuss the management of the Colonial Theater, once that renovation project is complete, which will take about a year, and have decided to appoint, to jointly appoint, a committee of local residents and citizens to form the, what I'm calling, the Colonial Programming Management Committee. And this is a committee that, pending council approval, will be charged with determining over the next forty days or so what management structure we should put in place as the city once we take charge, take proprietorship of the Colonial Theater in a year's time. So different over the five years that it's taken to get this project underway, get all the financing lined up and whatnot. Any number of suggestions have been made and looked into in terms of what sort of structure should be put in place by the city for the management of the theater, which we will be responsible for, as I said, in, starting in two thousand and twenty. And so, we are, Mayor-elect Hosmer and myself, as I said, have asked a number of people if they would volunteer to serve on this committee with a very short timeframe of, hopefully, by the end of January, to come to a conclusion after studying the evidence as to what kind of management structure would best serve the city at this point in time as far as programming for the theater is concerned. And they will make a recommendation, and once that recommendation has been made and comes back to city council, then the next step would probably be to send out requests for proposal for various agents who might be able to fill whatever it is role the city expects a third-party vendor to take, assuming, and I'm not assuming this, but assuming that the committee recommends that the city go in that direction, as opposed to managing the theater itself with city employees. Okay? But that would still be on the table. All right, so, to date, five people have agreed to serve on this committee, and we may add one or two people more in the next week or two, but the names that I would like to put forward tonight are Jared Gilmet, Elizabeth Howard, Karen Pryor, Rod Dyer, and Jim Regato. Those five individuals have agreed to serve on this committee, and at this point in time, I would ask for a motion from a member of the council to approve the formation of this committee and approve the nomination of these five people to serve on this committee at this point in time. The motion is made by Counselor Bowns, who's our second, Counselor Haynes, second. Does that motion, any discussion? Counselor Littman.
So just so I understand, the committee's role is to make a recommendation to the council, is that correct?
Yes. Yes. So that recommendation would come back to the council, and then, pending council approval, we would put together requests for proposals, assuming that the recommendation is to have a third-party vendor.
Would you just go over those names again?
Sorry?
Would you just go over those names again?
Jared Gilmet, Elizabeth Howard, Karen Pryor, Rod Dyer, Jim Regato.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. The second thing I would like to mention quickly, obviously, is this is the final meeting of the city council that was elected in two thousand and seventeen. The next meeting of the city council will occur on January, the next regular meeting of the council will occur on Monday, January thirteenth, and the people who were elected in November of this year will be seated at this table at that time. But between now and then, on January ninth, as most of you know, and I'm not sure all in the public know, we'd like to get the word out as widely as possible, on Thursday, January ninth, at seven PM at the Bellknap Mill, the city will hold its very special inauguration ceremony to welcome in not only the newly-elected counselors, of which we have one new member, Tony Felsh, for Ward Six, but primarily to introduce the community to our fifty-second mayor, Council Mayor-elect Andrew Hosmer. So his inauguration will be on January ninth at the Bellknap Mill at seven PM. For those of you who have not been able to have the experience of attending one of these inauguration ceremonies, we only do this on the occasion of a new mayor. It's pretty spectacular and a wonderful setting for the event, and it's quite an event, and I think not to be missed by people interested in city government in this city, and it doesn't happen all that often. So obviously, I would encourage the public and invite the public to feel welcome to attend that ceremony, again, at seven PM on Thursday, January ninth, on the third floor of the Bellknap Mill. Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? How about liaison reports? All right, we are on to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? No waiting? Okay, city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not attempt to slow us down here, keep the momentum going at tonight's meeting. So, projects update is included in your packet. Our projects are, for all intents and purposes, wrapped up for the season. You will see a little work going on, one down in the Waterworks Department area, where we're working on some drainage as part of the next phase of Union Ave to tie in, again, with a drainage project down there. We're also, we'll be working this winter on Lawrence Court, which is a little dead-end road off of Court Street that goes down to the Winnebago River, again, to work on some drainage. There is nobody impacted on that particular street. So, they might see a little work, but we are wrapped up for the most part. Representative St. Clair mentioned the new flashing streetlights at the intersection of Court and Main. Those are working very well. In addition, the new pedestrian crossing signs are now up, if you haven't seen them, so that if someone pushes the button, you've got a lit arrow that comes on now indicating no right turn while people are in the crosswalks, and so those are all updated and looking very nice as well. The last thing I'll bring to your attention is we do have two permits that have been submitted and are with the Department of Environmental Services, awaiting action on their part. One is for the Pearlie Pond Project, and the other one is for the Bartlett Beach Project, which we're hoping to get those permits issued so we can do the construction on the improvements at Bartlett Beach this spring. Second report in your packet is the Economic Development Report. The highlight there is the November inflation numbers in, touched up just a tick to two point one percent. We're waiting on the December number, which should be out in the early to middle part of January, and that'll finalize the twelve-month calendar year, and then that'll be the, one of the two components that we use when compiling next year's budget. So we're running a little bit under one point eight percent. I have not heard anything draconian as far as inflation, either to the good or the bad this month, so betting money would be one point seven or one point eight is where the annualized CPI will end up for the year. And I guess I'll stop there and take any questions anyone may have on that or anything else.
Any questions or comments for the city manager?
No, I have a motion.
You have a motion?
I do. I move to prohibit the word draconian used at this table.
I have a point of order. Is that, is that just on your part or everyone's part?
I can use it, nobody else.
Nobody else can use it, all right. Counselor Littman.
So I know the next item is twenty. I'd like to make sure that we could have the manager walk us through that, given some misinformation that may have been in the newspaper about what was going on with firefighter staffing and proposals.
Sure, I'm so happy to. So the next agenda item that Counselor Littman is referring to is a three-page doc, or two documents, total of three pages. The first is a staff report from Chief Piatti, just talking about the background for this particular proposal. So what this is doing is allowing some flexibility for the chief and the city to be able to attract quality employees in the fire department. And actually, it was Counselor Cheney who had indicated he was encouraging the city to look at it for both the police department and the fire department, to find some creative ways in order to help fill some of the vacancies that we've had. So we had some discussions about different ways we should be looking to approach this, not trying to set precedent, not trying to lock us into something that might be regrettable going forward. This really parallels what already happens in the police department, where if the, if an officer from another community who's already a sworn officer applies and has several years of experience, the chief has his discretion at LPD to perform that hire and place that employee on a step or a rate of pay that's commensurate with experience. If a teacher were to come into the Laconia area and want to work for the school and had five or ten years of experience in another district, the schools also hire and bring in a valuable employee and slot them in the pay schedule where they should be, as opposed to starting them out on a base step or a step one. So this is basically trying to mirror that. Our contractual language with the firefighters' union did not allow for that provision. So we've worked, had the discussion, this has the full support of the union, they're the ones who actually came to Chief Piatti and said, you know, we want to bring in some talented folks to work alongside us here, and we know it's challenging in particular to hire paramedics right now. So we drafted this language, this...
All right, so I, we're not actually to this item yet. In response to the request from Counselor Littman, what I think we're specifically asking for at this point in time is a clarification as to what was wrong with the newspaper article.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misconstrued. My take on the newspaper article is it spoke to that we were doing away with a probationary step, which is an initial step in hiring a firefighter. A new highly, a newly hired firefighter comes in, and we call probationary, and they're there for a year, they've got to prove themselves at different benchmarks over that time, and basically, if they're not satisfactory to the chief at the end of the year, that would end their employment. The article indicated that we were doing away with any probationary period in hiring all, bringing all new hires in at a higher rate of pay. What it says in your agenda packet is this would only apply for someone with three years of accredited fire service in a lateral transfer, meaning they were moving from an existing department to come to Laconia.
A different fire department.
Different fire department, but to come to the city of Laconia to work in our fire department. It is done with the, at the chief's recommendation through the personnel specialist for concurrent, and then ultimately to the city manager for concurrents. It caps at how high a lateral transfer could be placed, and it would be at firefighter two, or fire, so the third step on the scale, we have probation firefighter one, firefighter two.
So for clarification, if a new firefighter comes into the department with no experience...
They're hired on probationary bottom step, and they work their way through the ranks from the initial step in the pay system.
Just like always.
Just like always, and that will not change. This is very specific to a three years of experience from another department.
Is that satisfactory for now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Okay, we'll move on to the new business, and the first item of new business is that letter of agreement proposed between the firefighters' union and the city of Laconia. So are you going to make the presentation on this, or is the chief, or...
He can certainly come up, we probably have two more points left, so why don't I go through the points, and then maybe he can speak to the reasoning and some of the challenges he's seeing in hiring. So I already spoke to most of it. The couple of things that I think protect the city very strongly is, it's very clear in here that the decision to place an employee within the salary range above is at the discretion of the city and shall not be grievable. That was language that we insisted that was in there to protect us. And then the final thing is, this letter of agreement will remain effective until notice by either party is given to the other of its intention to withdraw its agreement. So it doesn't have to say forecause or a certain number of days' notice.
So is this part, does this become part of the overall collective bargaining agreement?
This, because it's got an exit clause to it, would basically be what we would consider to be a side letter. So it's a letter of agreement, it's not an actual part of the contract, but it's a side letter to the contract.
Well, and when does the contract expire?
The, we're in the, basically, we were halfway through a three-year contract, so it would be June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so, but this letter will not expire in twenty-one?
This letter would be evergreened until either party said, we don't want to do this anymore.
Until what?
It would be evergreened, it would be there until either party gave notice that it was not working for them, and they wished to withdraw from this letter.
And that could be unilateral?
Yes.
Okay, with how much notice?
No notice, no, no forecause. If a future council said to me, we don't like that, please withdraw us from that, it could happen tomorrow.
Okay. All right, chief, welcome.
Good evening. I, you know, a lot of what city manager said is a lot of the big bullet points. I think that one of the reasons that I'm so happy, I'm in complete favor of this, because of how hard it is to hire firefighters right now across the state. This is happening everywhere, especially if you're a paramedic. And one of the issues that comes up is a lot of people, if they leave to go somewhere else, another fire department will call them up and say, hey, you should come work for me. Now, I couldn't really start at your bottom step. Well, that's okay, what, you know, what are you looking, you know, what would help you out? Obviously, I would have no, I couldn't do that. So we started talking about this last year, we've talked a lot about, you know, trying to make this a destination department for people, we've talked about trying to, you know, improve some of that, getting people here, getting them to stay here long, getting them to work here, and this was something that we jumped on, should have done it a while ago, just didn't get to it, and now we're in a position where this is really going to hopefully benefit us. There's no guarantees this is going to work, but it certainly gives us another piece of an arsenal that, you know, is going to help me out if I need to try to get somebody in here.
Question for Counselor Littman.
What is our paramedic staffing situation as it stands today?
We have firefighter paramedics, non-officer paramedics, where three shifts have two.
How many openings do we have, is my question?
One, one. My goal staffing at the paramedic firefighter level is, the... My goal staffing at the paramedic firefighter level is, the goal would be 12. Three firefighter, non-officer paramedics per shift. We can suffice with eight. I have seven right now. And there's a vacancy. There's a vacancy because I lost a paramedic to a promotion. So our hope is, why I've waited to, it hasn't been a long vacancy, but I've been waiting to try to fill it with the hopes of trying to get a paramedic in. We put an ad out in the paper. I did not get a paramedic to apply.
Is that a promotion within the department?
Yes. When Deputy Riley retired, and the promotions worked their way up, a firefighter, paramedic got promoted to lieutenant, so.
Okay.
So I'm really hoping this works. You know, is it a guarantee it'll happen? This person, maybe, maybe not, maybe next person, maybe two down the line. At least it's an arsenal, piece of, you know, something in my arsenal that can try to get people in here. And again, I am 100% supportive of this.
Point of order?
I'm sorry?
Point of order. I'd like to express my thoughts on this, but I'll wait until it's the appropriate time to do that.
All right, let's ask if there are any questions for the chief first, before we bring this back to the council. Counsel Cheney?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question for the chief, but as the manager alluded, I support this idea. And I think it's not just his ability to hire, but it also has some potential savings to the city, getting people who are already trained and not investing in training for new people. So I think it balances out economically. Yes, we're spending a little more money to hire them, but we're not spending the money to train them and get them up to speed and what have you. So I do support it and feel it's a good idea.
Okay. While we have the chief up here, any more questions for him or the manager? Okay, thank you. All right, so this matter is now back before the council, and motions would be in order. Did you have something you wanted to, you want a motion on the table first that you want to address?
I'll let you with the mayor make that call.
All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the fire, to approve...
I'm going to move to table.
I should have read this before the meeting, I apologize. Want to help me out here, Mr. City Manager?
Probably should be to move to approve the letter of agreement for the starting pay of experienced firefighter. So maybe it should be, "I move to approve the letter of agreement," is what we're actually voting on.
To recommend the starting pay for...
Motion being in order to approve the letter of agreement pertaining to...
And I think you can read the rest, the starting pay.
Starting pay for experienced firefighters, EMT or paramedic, as outlined in the letter of agreement between the city of, proposed letter of agreement between the city of Laconia and the Laconia Professional Firefighters Association, as proposed in our packet tonight. Does that cover it?
That I think does, yes. Thank you for making that much clearer.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? Oh, I'm sorry, we need the motion to start with. Someone make that motion, we need to get it on the table. Counsel Lippman makes that motion, is there a second? Counsel Cheney? Counsel Haines seconds that motion, all right. So the motion is now on the table and is open for discussion. Counsel Bounce?
I'm not suggesting that I don't support this, because in principle, I think I do. I'm not entirely certain, but certainly the way, we want to encourage making Laconia Fire Department a destination place. We want to encourage that. We may in the end, or may not, I'm not certain of that, save money in terms of the training that we would go through for hiring lesser experienced personnel. My reluctance tonight to vote on this is that there are only four members of the council present. We are changing the guard somewhat. We'll have a new councillor on board for the next meeting. We'll have a new mayor on board for the next meeting. And we have two councillors missing tonight. And I think that this should be a full discussion by everybody on the council. And I don't know if Councillor Hosmer or Councillor Hammel are aware of this, have any input on this. So my reluctance to go forward doesn't relate to the merits of it. It relates to the timing of it. So I'm going to move to table this until the next regular meeting.
Counsel Cheney moves to table the motion until January 13th.
That would be Counsel Bounce.
Counsel Bounce, I'm sorry, Counsel Bounce. Is there a second to that?
I will second that.
Counsel Cheney seconds the motion. That motion is not debatable. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. All those opposed tabling, please raise a hand. The vote is two to two. The mayor votes in favor of the tabling, and so it carries on a three to two vote. So that will be on the agenda, Madam Clerk, for the city council meeting on January 13th.
Can it be taken up on the night?
No, we don't have a meeting.
Okay, the next item of business is...
Excuse me, point of order on that, I'm sorry. I distinctly recall we've taken it up previously. We've had a business that has transpired on inauguration night before.
We have done certain business. I think it was desired this time to hold a separate inauguration and make it more of the ceremonial in a non-business meeting, especially where the majority of the council was returning. Certainly, if it was the will of the council to place a business item for January 9th with the quorum, it could be, but that was the reason that...
I understand the reason to table it, but it seems to me, after hearing the explanations, it's a simple, practical, human resource issue that you, if you're trying to hire an experienced firefighter, you're talking about two steps in the range and that. And I can appreciate and support the fact that you want to have everybody have a say in it. I think we can consult with our fellow councillors in between, or someone can talk to a fellow councillor and...
Can I ask what the rush is?
Because we have a need to compete in the labor market, there's a, if you go, you know, Counsel Cheney probably has a better sense of it than even I. Can I finish my sentence, please?
Can I finish my question?
Can I finish my sentence? You said, "What the hurry?", and now I'm trying to give you an answer to what the hurry is.
Well, that's a draconian measure.
There's a national shortage and a statewide shortage of paramedics and... It seems silly to put ourselves in a position where we're not going to be competitive. It's not like we're talking about going three or four, five steps into the range. And so I can appreciate the fact that we want to let everybody weigh in. And if everybody weighs in and thinks it's silly to do that, that's fine, but putting it off for almost four weeks seems crazy.
Well, we're talking about January 9th.
What are you afraid of, of letting it go to a vote?
Are you going to let me, are you going to let me finish? What is this, dueling, don't let me finish?
Counsel Bounce has the floor.
January 9th is the date of the inauguration. The date of the first meeting is January 13th. That is one, two, three, four days, not four weeks. So I just don't, well, I had my say, so there you go.
Counsel Cheney?
This is a dichotomy for me, because I agree that everybody should be here to deal with this issue. I support it 100%. I will vote for it when the time comes. But I want Counsel Bounce and the two missing councillors, three actually, to have a chance to hear this and go forward with that. I think the votes will all be there, including the draconian councillor.
Did not, did anybody not pay attention to my motion?
Motion's already passed.
Yes, it has.
And I'm asking to have it on the agenda for the 9th, which has been done in the past. So if four days is not a big deal, I don't see what the big deal about taking it up on the 9th is.
Because...
Because you want your way, okay. We've established that.
I guess it's dueling who wants whose way, but that's enough of that. I think the 13th is fine. I don't have a dog in that fight.
I would like some consentists on which day you would like it on.
So my question is, from a procedural standpoint, a motion was made and passed to table it to the meeting on the 13th. So in order to change that motion, somebody who voted in favor of it would need to reconsider the motion, correct?
Someone on the prevailing side, yes. So in this case, who voted affirmative to table the 13th?
And I can't do that because I'm not allowed to make motions. So one of the two people who voted for it would have to move to reconsider the tabling vote so that we could, and if that motion passes, then we could have another motion to table it to a different date, or to have a revote on tabling it. And it's the whole concept of tabling. We'd put it back on the table as to whether or not we wanted to approve it tonight technically. So for the two of you who voted to table it, the two councillors who voted to table it until the 13th, which was the original motion, I would ask at this point in time if either one of you would move to reconsider.
I'll move to reconsider.
All right, Counsel Cheney has moved to reconsider the vote to table. Is there a second to that motion? Counsel Lippman seconds the vote. All right, so we're going to vote now to reconsider the motion. If this motion passes, then we're basically back where we started. Everybody understand that? Okay, we're back to where the original motion is on the table again for consideration. All right, all those in favor of reconsideration, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. The vote is three to one. In favor of reconsideration, that motion passes, so we are now back to consideration of the main motion. So we can either proceed to a vote on that, or we can entertain another motion to table to a different date. Counsel Cheney?
I would move that we table the motion to the 9th.
Is there a second to that motion? Counsel Lippman seconds that motion. All right, that motion's not debatable, so we'll vote on tabling this to the meeting on January 9th. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes affirmative, that motion carries. So the motion is now on the table to be taken up on January 9th. Now, my question is, from a procedural standpoint, we typically have, in past inaugurations, we have two meetings on the 9th. One very brief meeting with the old mayor and council, and one ceremonial meeting with the new mayor and council. So which council is going to take this up on the 9th?
So we did some research on this, and looking at the charter, new terms take place on the first day of the year, regardless of whether there's a meeting or not. So Mayor-elect Hosmer becomes the mayor. I know it's been past practice here to hold a meeting with the outgoing council, but technically, your terms, those terms have expired. So that's why we were changing it a little bit and just doing more of a ceremonial event on that evening. So under this scenario, this item would be taken up with the only meeting that would be legal, and that would be the new council, whose terms begin by charter on January 1st.
So is there not going to be a meeting of the old council on the 9th?
There is not a meeting of, there's not a formal meeting of the old council.
Like we've done in the past?
Correct, because those terms have expired. So technically, you are not mayor at that time to call a meeting to order.
So do we have to schedule a meeting for January 9th formally?
We will post it as a meeting, but we'll just make the inauguration a meeting, and we'll have a very brief business calendar.
Okay.
What I had discussed with the mayor-elect was maybe we would just do a vote on mayor pro tem that evening and leave other committee assignments and other stuff to your first business meeting on January 13th. So we could just do a mayor pro tem, we can do this item, and we'll just do the rest as ceremonial.
Okay. It's the will of the council? All right, so this is on the table then until January 9th. All right, the next item is discussion of city manager's compensation. And before we can have that discussion, I'm going to ask the council to meet briefly in non-public session. We won't ask the audience to leave. We'll go to next door to the conference room and discuss this, and then we'll come back and take appropriate action after that meeting. So I would ask at this point in time for a motion to go into non-public session under 91A, paragraph A, "The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee." Have that motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Counsel Haines makes that motion, seconded by Counsel Lippman. Any discussion? I ask, do we need a roll call vote on this? I asked the city clerk to call the roll, yes or no?
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Bounce?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haines?
Yes.
Mayor Engle?
Yes.
All right, so we have unanimous vote on that. So with the audience's indulgence, we're going to retire to the adjoining room, and we'll come back shortly.
Can you just turn the sound off?
All right, we have no unfinished business to discuss tonight. Council comments? And the, we're back on the agenda. Item twenty B, which is discussion of city managers' compensation. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve.
Councilor Bounds.
Thank you. I move to approve, uh, a raise the city manager from one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Effective January one.
Effective January one.
Is there a second to that motion? Councilman Lipman seconds the motion. All right, we have a motion on the floor to raise the annual salary of the city manager from one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars effective January one, two thousand and twenty. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Four votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, mayor, councilors. I appreciate the confidence. I've enjoyed eight and a half years of working here in the city and look forward to being here for as long as you'll have me, so thank you.
Well, you, in a, in a minute, you'll have officially outlasted two mayors. And we hope several more to come. And, uh, so obviously, we have tremendous confidence in the performance that you've done as our city manager, and we congratulate you.
Adopt that. Thank you.
Okay, we have no unfinished business to discuss tonight. Council comments? Councilman Lipman.
Like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, um, your service and leadership of the council. And it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and, um, gonna miss you at the table very much.
Thank you. Councilor Cheney.
Mayor, I also wanna thank you as one of the newest members of the council. I've, uh, watched you shepherd the Colonial Theater and, uh, short-term rental and historic district issues through. And I found your leadership to be forceful without being oppressive. And, uh.
Not draconian?
Certainly not draconian. And I, I will miss.
This is gonna be the death of me yet.
We can only hope. And, and I, I wanna say thank you for helping me get through this two years. And in point of fact, the reason I, I ran a second time was because you made this, um, uh, enjoyable. If, if that's, uh, that may be a little overstating, but, but you've made it certainly tolerable for me. And, uh, and I, I've been impressed with your leadership. I mean that sincerely. And, uh, thank you for putting up with my council comments for two years.
I look forward to it, meeting to meeting. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Haynes?
Yes, I'd also like to thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, the many occasions that I followed you around at different, um, events, you were always very polite and appreciative and recognized the counselors, and, uh, you'll be sincerely missed.
Thank you. I will, uh, I, I, do I still get to make a short speech at the, on the ninth, or have you cut that out too?
Oh, we, we've got you slotted for forty-five minutes, I think.
Forty-five minutes? Well, I'm gonna have to do more work, and it's gonna take forty-five minutes. No, I appreciate.
Just, just. Four or five. I can't read my own handwriting.
Just before you end, for the record, I share all these thoughts, and I've expressed them to you in the past.
You have.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve with you.
My pleasure, and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna miss all of you, and, and, uh, I intend to, uh, to make some personal comments on the ninth, and I'll save my, save my ammunition for that night. But I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other council comments tonight? All right, if not, uh.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah.
And Happy Hanukkah.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I would just personally like to thank the businesses and the citizens of Laconia. The lighting is spectacular, and it's been a very festive season, and I think all Laconians should be congratulated.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that observation. All right, if there's no, uh, further business to come before this council, I'm going to declare the final meeting of the council of two thousand seventeen to be adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM. Thank you.